I proposed to Mike English, the president of CLCF Sorbonne, is that field being used for them?
Right.
If he says yes it is, my next call is to AAU and say unavailable.
So we're not turning away teams, we're just saying nonprofit and housing projects come first and if the field is open, you're welcome to it and we'll charge you a certain fee.
This council, there's, I believe, there are quite a few new members, so before the budget hearing starts, I'll give you a figure. Since 2007, we average $286,000 per year charging for our office. Average. Over a million and a half dollars, not counting this fiscal year we are present. We run it like a business.
Any other questions for our president? Councilman Lee.
I was just wondering if this is limiting the Princeton leagues to the CLCF? I just wanted to make sure that if there were other Princeton leagues, would they be able to have a sample league as well? Or we sort of...
Wait, you have to understand, in the city of Princeton, we have Princeton, American National West, Edgewood South Avenue and CLCF. We call them five house leagues. They all have their own fields to play on. It's done by divisions.
Okay. So we're not talking about those other leagues? We're just talking about this league and this field? So in a way, are we limiting the possibilities of other local leagues using those fields if they need to, let's say?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
We have many fields.
Good.
Council President Fernando.
One last question, and I think this is a concern that councilmen, stakeholders and others may have. If for some reason, Gal says they're using the field on Sunday and they don't, would they still have to pay? So let's say they call you and say, "We're going to be using the field on Sunday," and you turn away AAU. If they tell you that, they still have to pay for the field that they said they were going to use, right? Because they still have to have the field.
That's a very good point. If I had to turn away AAU because that field's being used on Sunday, I will always find another field. I don't turn away AAU.
That's what I'm getting at. Thank you.
No more questions, I hope? Are there any motions? Half an hour ago, there was a motion in the second. Click, please take the roll.
Yes.
House of Sykes?
No.
House of Fox?
Yes.
House of McHale?
Yes.
House of Seale?
Yes.
House of Searay?
Yes.
House of Preege?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Claims Committee. Councilwoman Sarah Lee, chair.
The Claims Committee voted to rat by the claim of Julio Ar... I don't know how you say it.
Sheila?
Sheila. For $5,451.32, she donated to her car.
Is there a motion? Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who did we pass it?
There are none. Quick, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
House of Sykes?
Yes.
House of Fox?
Yes.
House of McHale?
Yes.
House of Seale?
Yes.
Yes.
House of Reddick?
Yes.
House of Preege?
Yes.
Yes. Next voices, public hearings. Any member of the public would like to speak on any undocumented matter? Please leave your time to four minutes.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Arena. I live in E.E. Blaine Lane Road. First of all, I want to congratulate you, Council President Lee. I have come here tonight because I've been agitated. I followed the website for your email address and I've sent several, of which you have not responded. I wrote to my councilman, Dr. Watts, and asked him if this was true and correct, and he did say it was... The problem that I have is, for a lot of the constituents, we take the time to write in, and I find it really, really annoying that I don't get an answer. I hate not being acknowledged. I think most people do. So one of the things I wrote to you about was a citizen, I wanted to do a citizen of the year award. We do it for other things. I thought it would be really nice to have, kind of, give merit to the person who has done a lot of work in the community. I know of one person who's done work for 20 years helping parents with autism and different things, and I think it'd be good to recognize, it's great for kids to see, it's a really good, inspiring thing to do. The other thing is etiquette during public meetings. I have been going to some school committee meetings this year and watched a lot of the people go, and they were taxed because of, pull out their phone, talk, somebody's speaking. I really don't know how you can come to a meeting like this, listen to me, and test, or take a phone call. It's just to be rude. It's not for etiquette. I'm fortunate that I'm going to sit here and then more stand here and ask for some sort of ordinance. I talked to Councilman Watts about it, and he said that you were looking into actually using laptops to cut down paperwork, and I thought it was a great idea. However, if you think about it, you're doing research at a meeting when somebody brings something up, "Oh, I'm going to bring my laptop and I can do, you know, research." That to me doesn't make sense. If you did something during the break, perhaps? So under the Open Meetings Act, you could request a FOIA. So anything, we're pretty to anything that goes on at a meeting. Is it a pain? Yes. But I could certainly file for it if I wanted to find out information. So my question is laid out here. I'd like to have you list all of the new members with their correct emails and contact information on the website. And please, if somebody writes to you, please answer them. I am going to leave this letter with you. I do expect to have some sort of response. That would be greatly appreciated. Look forward to hearing more from you in the future. Thank you.
Point of information, Councilman.
Yes, Councilman Akado.
Just for the record, I know that constituents have tried emailing me during the storm memo and also just recently, in my report, I think Councilman Botts swore also Verizon was down for these three days in the Pierlo's Avenue, Capitol Street area. So we have had problems with the internet due to the storm and Verizon troubles.
My situation, which is why I didn't respond to Mrs. Arena, was that my computer was down.
Since January 1st?
No.
Okay.
Well, last week, actually last two weeks, because I had a flood myself, I had to attend first, and while we were fixing it, all the equipment had been taken out of the house.
I'm sorry to hear that.
And I'm sure you are.
Believe me, I know, I've been there, so I get it.
That's my reason. I did, however, rejoin eBay today, and I finally got my computer off the hook. And I made with Mr. Botts, we're going to have tablets and computers, and we can't take five-minute breaks every time we want to discuss anything, whether between ourselves or whispering to each other, but everything came through. I'd like to get a legal opinion from our attorney, considering the...
FOIA.
Public information, the...
Open Meetings Act.
I'm going to dig a little deeper into this issue, but I'm not sure that every communication on every device at a public meeting becomes a public record. I don't know the answer to that. I've looked at the Attorney General's opinions, there's no opinion on that, nor am I aware of any court decision that supports that. I think it's a question that does need to be researched, if we're going to put it in there, but I mean, if it's a governmental machine, it doesn't mean necessarily a person has access to all things, because there are certain categories under the open records, Open Meetings Law that are exempt. So we'll take a look at that and we'll give advice back to the council.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public that can speak on any undocumented item? There are none. Public hearing section is now closed. Election of politicians, Blood Commission, Nicholas Peck of Eagle Jr., sponsored by Councilon City.
I'd like them to make motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made second and discussion. There are none. Councilman Akado.
Thank you, Councilman. I just, like I said, I know Mr. Captain of Blue Bridge, a tireless worker, and I served with him on the Safety Services Committee, he did a fabulous job there, so I'm looking forward to working with him there.
Any other questions? There are none, but please take the roll.
House of Lee?
Yes.
House of Sykes?
Yes.
House of Fox?
Yes.
House of McHale?
Yes.
House of Seale?
Yes.
House of Searay?
Yes.
House of Preege?
Yes.
House of Reddick?
Yes.
House of Reddick?
Yes.
Yes. Juvenile hearing board, Joe's rules, Alden, sponsored by Council President.
Motion approved.
Second. Any discussion? Councilman Akado.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just say I know Joe did a great job, because it's my opponent to 10, and he also can't paint harder than anyone ever ran against him. So I'm sure Joe did a fabulous job. I'm hearing board.
Any other discussion? There are none. Quick, please take the roll.
House of Lee?
Yes.
House of Sykes?
Yes.
House of Fox?
Yes.
House of McHale?
Yes.
House of Seale?
Yes.
House of Searay?
Yes.
House of Preege?
Yes.
House of Fernando?
Yes.
Yes. Report of city officers, Councilman Sam Ray.
Council President, before you want to report city officers, the Blood Commission is being rejuvenated, and I like stepping down as chairman. At this time, could we possibly appoint Councilman Akado as the new chairman of Blood Commission?
Is that in the form of a motion?
That's in the form of a motion.
Motion approved. Second. Any discussion? There are none. Quick, please take the roll.
House of Lee?
Yes.
House of Sykes?
Yes.
House of Fox?
Yes.
House of McHale?
Yes.
House of Seale?
Yes.
House of Searay?
Yes.
Yes.
House of Reddick?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to thank my colleagues. Thank you.
Report of city officers, are there any points from city officers?
Thank you, Council President. Cranston Fire Department Captain Glenn Bathgate has requested a place on detention roll. Captain Bathgate has met all the necessary requirements and is urged to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? There are none. Quick, please take the roll.
House of Lee?
Yes.
House of Sykes?
Yes.
House of Fox?
Yes.
House of McHale?
Yes.
House of Seale?
Yes.
House of Searay?
Yes.
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 That's all I had.
Claims set by this listed officer, $1,780.32, they were given. This information doesn't require approval by the council. Is there any discussion? There are none. Council President, communications. I'm going to repeat what I said the last two council meetings. We have a huge, huge unfunded liability in this state. I know that there is officers who are working at more than my assistance, the assistance of this council, and I honestly believe that working together in a bipartisan way, we can accomplish great things. And the biggest thing that we can accomplish as a city is to work to eliminate that unfunded liability, because that will cripple the taxpayers of this city that's not taking care of. There are none. Councilmember, communications. Councilman Sam Ray, you can respond.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to get an update on Cranston Street car project. I think we're looking for a meeting date, Director Cordy.
Yes, Director. Internally, we did meet and review the 30% plans, the 30% plans that were delivered to the outside consultants. We did suggest a couple of tweaks to those, but in the meantime, we reached out to RINOT to find out if there were any specific conditions requiring a public meeting that we had to advertise to the public, and RINOT said no. So what we've done is we've reached out to the affected neighbors and the neighbors who have expressed concerns in the past, and we're trying to arrange a date for the month of March right now.
Thank you. The Fletcher Rafton Flooding Engineering Study, I can give an update on that. It was a meeting last Wednesday night. So I do have a question for the administration. The Fossumo Neil Engineering Project is like 99% finished, but the issue now is the eight businesses on the business side of Fletcher have to okay DEM permitting process. At the meeting, Mr. the Blood Commission. Mr. LaPola said that he was going to reach out to the businesses to find out what their concerns were, because we need all eight businesses to sign off on the DEM permitting process before we can continue. Mr. Farmer from NRCS said the funds are available, he's pushed the deadline back to next September, but rest is still there. So my question to the administration is, will we be needing one of the business meters on the other side of Fletcher, and can we all lay their concerns to get them to sign so we can get moving on the much-needed flood wall?
Yes, sir. Not only will Mr. LaPola be active in that, but also NRCS and Mr. Farmer to get their approvals for the DEM permitting process. Now, I wasn't at that meeting, as you know, I was at the other public meeting, and Mr. LaPola did not share with me what I think I just heard you say, that there was funding available to build the wall?
The funding available is, they're not a regulatory commission, they're just maybe a grant, I guess like a grant area, where they give us the money, but they can't do anything until we get past this step.
That part is absolutely correct.
So once we get past this step, they're very positive that we can get funds available to start, we have to start. But until that happens, until we get, it's not seven of eight, six of eight, or five of eight, it's eight of eight. So I really need the administration to allay their concerns. I don't know what their concerns would be, I don't know why they would support a flood, because they're the first, they're the first line of defense if the river flows before it gets to the houses, so...
If I may just elaborate on that, Council President, because some of you councilmen having been here are familiar with all the history associated with this proposed project, it is a strictly voluntary project. Every property owner that is affected by this has to voluntarily step up to the plate and agree to its terms and conditions. Now, if we don't get 100% participation, it doesn't necessarily mean that we will kill the project, but it will significantly slow down the project and force it to be revised and refined to try to work around that one or two neighbors, which would not be the best case scenario, to be said. So it doesn't necessarily kill the project, but it would certainly be advantageous for everyone involved if we get 100% participation. That's correct.
Thank you, Director. Dollar Tree on Mainfield Pike, to the president, I'd like to put that on show course at the Safety Services Meeting on next Monday night.
Which business?
Dollar Tree and Patriot disposal. There was another four o'clock dumpster empty last Friday. So my patience is wearing thin.
Okay. Quick, put that down for Safety Services.
Mr. President?
Councilman?
Can I just follow up with Mr. Cordy on the flooding thing? Because I know there are other plots in the city that also have these issues, and I don't know what's happening. I know in Edgewood, I guess, there's been a process where they decided to buy some of the homes that were flooded, but there also are plots in Western Cranston that traditionally flood and whatnot, and I don't know if there's any monies available or anything we can do for them also, i.e. Nanderport, Warren Court, that area there, traditionally flood and have sewer backups, so...
Councilman Seale?
Yes.
I'll have to take one question. Let's not get into a two-hour discussion of flooding in the city of Cranston.
So the question would be, then, Mr. President, are there monies for other areas in the city besides this Fletcher area project that could be used and available?
Director.
Yes, please.
Councilman, I can be available to you in two or three-page spreadsheet of projects that we're actively pursuing in the city that are called flood-related, but I should also caution you that all of these monies are coming from outside sources, there's very little city money associated with them. I'd be happy to share that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Council President, I just have one more. The list of private vendors, I have that list, so I can likely strike that, but I would like to take this opportunity to ask the administration if we can get the costs of the last wizard.
Mr. Strong, I'll show you, I'll wear those figures.
Be easy on us, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Strong. Our latest notice that we ran between overtime, equipment, materials, et cetera, was approximately $400,000. There may be available some reimbursement through FEMA for a good portion of this. Mr. Cordy can elaborate on that, because I know he's been working on that, but the money that's across the city to date is about $400,000.
That includes our private vendors, materials, et cetera?
Yes. Materials, overtime, overtime, yes.
Director, I'm not going to hold you to a figure, but if you just get an idea.
Well, first of all, the first thing you can hold me to is that there will be reimbursement. There does look like there potentially is an opportunity for reimbursement, and if that does in fact come to pass, which we should know within the next 10 days or so, that reimbursement will be in the neighborhood of 75% reimbursement, and the better news than that is there will be more than the $400,000 round thousand that the Finance Director mentioned, because more things will actually qualify under that reimbursement. So we could see more than that, I guess.
And we're leaning on, are we leaning on any triggering process?
Yes, we have to wait for the Rhode Island agreement to get the final tallies for the entire state, and if those tallies reach a magic number, then the governor will put a claim into FEMA.
Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Sykes.
I answered a question of whether we were considering having a non-buyback program, if we had the money to pay for that, and something the police department thought was a good idea. Thank you, Director.
Yes, we do. It's an excellent idea. We're currently coordinating with two other communities for a regional approach and identifying light neighborhoods where we can use this funding. The last time Providence ran such a program, they retrieved 300 weapons at the cost of $200 per unit, so we're using those numbers to sort of estimate where we're going to be if we do a regional with two other cities.
That sounds great. When might that be? Do you have any idea?
We're looking at April.
April. And did we ever do this before?
Not to my recollection.
All right, but you feel that's a worthwhile expenditure to get the guns off the neighborhoods?
The mayor's who believes this is a worthy pursuit, given our current circumstances, and it's a good opportunity to get some guns off the street, sir. Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Akado.
Thank you, Council President. Just a few communications of the administration. First, topic from last month's meeting pertaining to speeding on Laurel Avenue, has any measures been implemented at this time, or has any plan to address the speeding on Laurel Avenue by the administration?
Director, 251 motor vehicles stopped, 128 violations of crime assessed from January 1.
Excuse me? Specifically Laurel Avenue?
On Laurel Avenue, yes.
That's great, and I appreciate the job and work that Cranston Police Department's doing, but you know, as I know, they can't be there 24/7.
That's correct.
It's impossible. So we have a couple of incidences where they run that stop sign and they crash into houses because Laurel runs at a dead end with Chestnut Hill. So basically, what I'm asking the administration, and I thank you for being very visible in stopping speeding, I thank you for that, but I think we need, A, to look at some type of barrier if a car does run that stop sign, they don't plow into a house, they need to plow into some bushes or cedar trees or some type of Jersey barrier. I think that's something that the administration should look at. Also, I think we need to look at speed bumps or more signage, slow down, stop sign ahead, dead end ahead, whatever it is, but we can't afford another disaster that we've had in the past.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Council President. To some of the issues that Councilman Akado has brought up, we are looking at improving signage in the area. The traffic engineer has been instructed to look at installing Chevrons or brighter, more visible signage to warn people that they are coming upon a T-stop. However, some of the things that we will not consider are Jersey barriers or any barriers like that, primarily for the horrific effects that they could possibly have in terms of a car hitting that Jersey barrier and coming to a complete stop and possibly the car being crushed, killing the occupants. Those are reasons why you wouldn't want something like that, but, you know, we can certainly look at other features that may work in that area, but as far as anything resembling barriers or something to stop a car like that, you really don't want to, you really don't want to explore that option. It's just, there's a myriad of reasons for that.
So your record is saying you'd much rather have them hit the house to stop? If they don't stop at some type of buffer, they're going to go through the foundation of a house?
Well, I think the question to you would be is, are you in favor of someone hitting a Jersey barrier and going through the front of the windshield and dying?
I'm not in favor of that.
Right.
Because the, I have a potential for a speedo that runs a stop sign might be inebriated. That's a possibility. Whereas a homeowner watching the news at night and finding a car in the living room, I mean, quite different.
Considering that an incident like that has only happened once in probably, or maybe twice in, say, a decade or so that we could look back at this, you know, that's one thing to consider. And the other thing to consider is, if you put a Jersey barrier there, that's an immediate impact, it's a one-shot thing, but with a front edge of the house, you have, you know, the sidewalk and the front lawn, the grass, you have more of a chance for that vehicle to stop. And, you know, yes, there'll be property damage, but I certainly would imagine that you'd be in favor of property damage and even a car going through a house than to having people hit a Jersey barrier that we put there and essentially sentencing these people to a death sentence for hitting that barrier.
All right, you should be frank, Mr. Lopez, and I appreciate that. As long as we implement some signage there, I mean, you never addressed speed bumps, what about the possibility of a couple of speed bumps there?
As a matter of practice, the administration has never supported speed bumps for a variety of reasons. During the winter, they provide a challenge for the plows, they provide a challenge for some of our rescue vehicles in terms that it adds time, because while the trucks could probably fly right over them, in that particular area, you know, they would have to slow down, and when you're rushing to a fire or to save someone's life in an ambulance, or if, you know, in the case of the police rushing to a scene of importance, every second counts, and you certainly don't... And you certainly don't want to add to that with speed bumps. However, there may be other remedies that we can look at, maybe plateaus or tables that we could look at. And that's something that the traffic engineer has been instructed to consider when looking at the overall situation on Laurel Avenue and Chestnut Hill.
Well, thank you, I just want to clarify, that is a school zone, Gladstone School is only about two or three blocks from that stop sign.
Correct.
And when I drive through Providence, no matter where I find an elementary school, I find speed bumps. And I don't know what the problem is with Cranston, but in Providence, I'll take you to a local, former, about eight to the mayor of Providence, and you're well aware, when you drive around a neighborhood, an elementary school in Providence, there are speed bumps.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next, we have a small snow removal policy. Counselor President, I would like to address a letter that I received from a constituent communication that sent to Mr. Lopez pertaining to the snowstorm and the foot plowing we had in the Arlington area. And I'm not going to read the letter, because it's two pages long, each member of the council has one as well as you. And I think Mr. Lopez received that from Aunt Calice's by email. I'm just going to state that, living in the Arlington area for fifty-two years and living near the numerous administrations and mayors, the hills in Arlington were always a priority to be plowed. And the last snowstorm, they were plowed for forty-six hours. Also, I think this administration and this council should look at a snow removal policy that should be guidelines to how we plow the snow. Snow plowing shouldn't be used as a political weapon against any council person. It should be done above that. It should be areas that have lost their power should be first and foremost, especially in an area that has five senior managers and many elderly people living in homes. So these concerns need to be addressed. I would like this council to look at the snow removal policy. I would like it to go to a committee at your discretion, Counselor President. Whichever committee would like to address the snow removal policy.
Mr. President, if you'll excuse me, I already had correspondence based on your conversation with the city clerk put on a public works agenda for this month, so if that would help out, that's fine. If not, then, any other things you want? Or just through the administration, we'll definitely have an open hearing on it.
And at that time, we'll have a hearing and address the questions to the administration.
Yeah, the only concern I have, Mr. President, is that it's the same night as safety services. And last safety services meeting, we were in second session. Because we were running late, there were some items that we should talk about in the executive session that we need to get to. So I just want to make sure that if we have a meeting and it happens to run a little bit late, we'll be able to finish the meeting and get into the safety services meeting a little bit later than usual, counsel. That's the only concern. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor President, if I can address a couple of issues that the councilman raised. First, while I do recognize on behalf of the administration that there were some difficulties in Ward Three, I would like to make it clear that under no circumstances and under no time does plowing become a political issue for this administration. And as a matter of fact, to put it on the record clearly, Ward Three and the surrounding hills of the Arlington area are at the top of the list and are a known priority to us in our plowing operations. I can address what happened during this last storm as a combination of a comedy of errors, if you will. The snow stopped on approximately Saturday morning about nine-thirty, ten o'clock in the morning. We had over a hundred and fifty pieces of equipment out throughout the city trying to clear, clear, clear over twenty inches of snow in some areas with snowdrifts as high as four to five feet tall. In Ward Three, we have an experienced plow person that works there who has been assigned to that area for many years and usually does a fantastic job. There were many challenges with this storm, as it was not a normal storm, it was a blizzard. And let's not mistake that for a regular storm. Twenty inches of snow is a lot to move for any plow. The additional challenges in Ward Three unfortunately caused some of the equipment that we had out there not to be able to access some of the roads. We had challenges such as cars being parked in the street, people just not able to move their cars. And when we called the police to enforce the parking ban, they did all they could to get the tows, the towers out there. But some of them, some of the companies that we used for safety reasons had pulled their equipment out from towing. So those were some of the challenges that happened to us in Counselor Mano Kettow's ward. But if the councilman would recall also that when, after his multiple calls to me throughout that day in the middle of the storm, I assured him that by Saturday, Sunday morning at seven in the morning, his ward would be a priority. And in fact, our public works director Mason and our highway supervisor John Corso personally on Sunday morning at seven AM worked in that ward, clearing that ward, making it possible for everyone. So while it was inconvenient and we may have been able to do a better job, I do want to make it clear that the brave people who we employ as our plow drivers and contractors did their best in an area where, quite frankly, it was just such a challenge. I feel that they did the best that they could. And I think some of the criticism that's coming from the councilman is coming out of frustration, which I can understand, because constituents, unfortunately, in today's world are impatient and don't want to hear that something can't be done. But considering all the factors that came into play, I think that our people did an admirable job at trying to do the best they could with a difficult situation, in a difficult area that presented unique challenges. And furthermore, we did address the issue immediately as soon as we could, which was that Sunday morning. And we really, I think, did a good job in that area, so. While I understand the councilman's frustration, I do want to be clear that our people did everything that they could. And I really think it's unfair for him to say that, you know, there's politics that come into play with this thing, because you don't fool around with public safety. And that's what this is, it's a public safety issue. And I really think that our workers did the best job that they could, so, thank you.
Counselor Mano Kettow.
Thank you, Counselor President. It is true that Mr. Lopez did support me, he promised equipment. And I know he spent time in my ward as the mayor editor, Councilor Sito. And I assure Councilor Sito and Mr. Lopez realize how severe it was in my ward. We had a sheer burst, twenty inches of snow, tree branches, crossroads, et cetera, et cetera. The fact of the matter is, by the plows failing to be out Friday afternoon, the snowstorm started at twelve noon, and I documented everything. By them not being out there Friday afternoon, Friday evening, Saturday morning, plowing those hills, they never got to the hills, therefore cows were stuck on the hills. So by the time the plows came Sunday morning, it inhibited their progress. So of course, things even be blocked down slower. So the fact of the matter is, if they had gotten the plows out earlier, when the snow was four, five, six inches, it wouldn't have been that difficult by Saturday, Sunday morning to remove a foot of snow versus two feet or an excess of two feet of snow. So I just hope in the future, we commit to those hills much earlier than we did in this last storm, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Counselor. If I can just correct the record, our plows were out there, but at one point, it was snowing three to four inches per hour. And again, that's quite a challenge. There were streets that the plows did go down a couple of times. And in a matter of an hour or two, the snow was falling so heavy that it looked like those streets were not touched. Again, Counselor, I do acknowledge that we could have done a better job in your ward. However, I do think it's unfair to say that we didn't dedicate resources or manpower there, because the resources and manpower were there, it was just an overwhelming situation, a difficult storm. And again, they don't use the term blizzard loosely. It really truly was a blizzard. And unfortunately, this particular area suffered, you know, a breakdown or whatever you want to call it. But again, you know, we're, we're okay with the job that was done. And I think that you know that we're trying to do the best we can with what we have there, so, thank you.
Who else wants to go?
Thank you, Counselor President. Were there any mitigating factors as far as plowing, roads were inhibited from plowing? I know on my aunt's Ave, right near the Auburn Library, there was a pickup truck parked on the wrong side of the road, sticking out into the traffic. And definitely, was it blocking traffic indefinitely, blocking the plows? Did you experience that in other parts of the city where maybe the plows couldn't get to certain areas? Any downed trees, wires, anything like that?
There were a combination of those issues throughout the city. And as I mentioned earlier, specifically in Ward Three in the hilly areas, as people tried to get home, they got stuck inside of the road. They would leave their car, you know, on the road and walk home with the expectation that they would come back and get it. Again, we had challenges removing the cars, because the towing companies, for their own safety, pulled their towing vehicles off the roads. So although we were trying to enforce the towing, we just didn't have the equipment to get them out of the way. In addition, because of the severity of the snowstorm, we had actually under contract, heavy front-end payloaders, heavy equipment that is designed to tackle these hills. But again, because of the myriad challenges of cars in the road, branches breaking down and blocking the street, wires coming loose, and other challenges like that, that's what made it challenging at that time. But again, as I will repeat, once the storm cleared and we were able to get a safer look at things, we were right on it Sunday morning.
Thank you, and I just look forward to the, if you have any public works, just to know of the overall plans for the city, just for my own knowledge, constituents' hall, and give them a heads up.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Santa Maria.
Thank you, Counselor President. My complaints weren't as much of the quality of the street plowing, is that a lot of the vendors were bouncing off the curb and above the drifts like a basketball. So I'm going to reiterate my efforts that we order some more big trucks in the next budget, because these, and when the, these kinds of storms, the vendors just can't handle them. The one that came down my street did one pass, that was it. He wasn't curb-to-curb, and he was out in trouble just doing the one pass. So I really, I really urge us to, these trucks that we buy aren't just for snow plowing, they're seasons, they can be used all season around, twenty-four-seven. So that would be my, the biggest complaint was these trucks that are coming down on the streets just can't handle this. So we need the bigger trucks, we need more, we need bigger trucks.
Well, considering that, if I may, Counselor President, considering that this is the first major blizzard probably since, I don't know, the December debacle of a few years ago, you know, we have to look at the cost benefit of having these trucks here versus contracting with them for a particular event. And in this particular storm, the mayor and the public works director had enough foresight to secure these trucks ahead of time. And you can clearly see other cities and towns who were not even able, no matter how much money they offered, to secure these trucks. You saw the end result of, you know, them having special hearings and those mayors and town administrators getting thrown under the bus. So considering the limited pool of the availability of those trucks and considering the scoping magnitude of the storm, I would say that our public works people did the best they could, in my opinion, did an admirable job.
Just given the tools to, you know, to work with, that's all I ask.
Absolutely.
Counselor Kentucky.
Thank you, Counselor President. For those of us that were old enough to remember the blizzard of seventy-eight, I think if you recall, we were stranded for a week. I mean, and that was a similar storm. And I think you have to, we have to step back and think about, you know, how far we've come since then, because I think we have a tendency to be very impatient, all of us. We want, we want our power back on, you know, immediately. We want the roads cleared so we can get out of the storm two hours after the snowstorm. I got to see, you know, Mr. Lopez out, out and about in a truck, going through all the woods, working tirelessly during the storm. And, and, you know, people, I heard people complain, I got some complaints as well. They said the trucks were sitting, resting for a while. I mean, I think people expected these drivers to work twenty-four-seven for, you know, four days straight, never sleep. The trucks don't, you know, the trucks need a rest too. You can't just keep machines running for a week at a time. So I think it's an unusual situation, hasn't happened in, you know, thirty years. It's just an incredible storm. I know that we could have, we had the money to buy a few more of those larger vehicles, it would be a good thing. I happened to see some in Maine yesterday, actually, and they had the snowstorm in Maine. But curiously, there was still no one on the road while the plows get out there and do their work. You can't stop the snow, that heavy snowfall was a problem, so. I think we should, you know, I think, I think we did a fairly good job under the circumstances. And I know that Congress and the mayor's office, they were out there working and out in the cold, trying to make sure of the things that are done, so I want my kudos to the administration.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Lieutenant President.
First off, I'd like to thank all the Department of Public Works employees who worked so hard during the blizzard. I think we all could sit here and pick apart things the constituents called us about, that they had issues with. But at the end of the day, this was a blizzard. And I do think the administration, though they could have done a better job in some areas, specifically I think in Ward Three, parts of Ward Four, they did the best they could with what they had. I do agree with Counselor Santa Maria that we do have to try to fit in the budget either in this cycle or the next cycle, a couple more bigger trucks. So when we do have issues with the hills in Ward Three, we have the equipment to actually plow them out, not seeing pickup trucks trying to move fifteen, twenty, something.
Through the chair, if I can respond to that. Thank you. Yes, heavy equipment is important to us, but there's two things that I would like to address in response to that. First of all, the policy is to keep the primary roads open from a life safety standpoint. The secondary roads are secondary, okay? And in the process of keeping those primary roads open with the big trucks, there were numerous incidences of fire department rescue vehicles, fire department vehicles, police vehicles, as well as public works vehicles getting stuck in the snow. And I'm talking about some big vehicles. I'm talking about some of the big public works dump trucks with plows in the front who got stuck. And we would have to redirect heavy equipment, anglers and plows from other areas out there to try to get them out, particularly with the fire and the police vehicles, because of the life safety issues associated with them. On more than one occasion, one of these very big trucks got stuck. We sent another one out to get him out, and he got stuck. So you can see we were dealing with a very unusual storm.
Vice President, where are you?
I think in my remarks, I made the statement that it was an unusual storm, but it wasn't. But I do think, you know, if you live in New England, you will get ten-inch snowstorms and fourteen-inch snowstorm and eight-inch snowstorm where the big trucks will not get stuck. And it would be probably more balloons in the rest of the city, or Department of Public Works, to try and fit in the budget a couple of extra big trucks.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Councilman Maria. That's certainly something we can take a look at.
Councilman Stikeos?
A question. What is the system for checking on the contractors? Because in my neighborhood, some streets were done really well, but then other ones, for instance, Patuxah Avenue was just not done well at all. And is there, how do you check to see whether the contractors do their job?
We, Councilman?
Yes, Councilman?
We have a system of spotters. And what the spotters do is they go out into the different quadrants and observe visually what the work is that the contractors have done. And there are many factors that can come into effect as to why a road gets done better than others. And, you know, some of them can be the experience of the person doing it, some of it can be the equipment, some of it can be the condition or time at which they do the sweep through the street. And to address one of the things that's been brought up here also is the comment that all they did was do a strip down the middle of the road. And for a particular storm like this of this magnitude, that's actually by design. It would not be realistic or practical to try to do curb-to-curb in a storm like this. So the first priority, as Director Corey said, is to open up the primary roads for emergency vehicle access. And obviously, the next step is to hit the secondaries in terms of cut-through roads, as they're called, or feeder roads. And when you're battling a storm like this, you're fighting against time and accumulation. So the quickest, fastest way to ensure that public safety is maintained through the access of fire apparatus, rescue apparatus, and police apparatus is to at least make the path down the middle of the road so that this equipment can get through. So that's why you saw that type of plowing in the initial stages. What oftentimes happens is, once the storm subsides or ends and we're able to redirect resources to tackle plowing curb-to-curb or down to the pavement, invariably, you get the phone call of, I cleaned up my driveway and the plow just came by and pushed everything into my driveway. So, you know, while I make light of that situation for these purposes, just realize that these are very challenging storms. And in the end, we're not going to please everyone, but we certainly are going to try to do the best we can for public safety.
Counselor Stikeos? So there are four zones in the city? You said quadrants, and there are four people who go around?
No, excuse me, Councilman, I misspoke when I say quadrants. Or if you want to call them zones, that would be fine. And there are multiple zones throughout the city. Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you how many there are, but there's quite a few. And what we do is we assign spotters to the different areas, and they follow up and check up on the vendors.
And do the vendors, if I'm a vendor and it starts to snow, do I know which streets I'm plowing? Do I plow the same streets every time it snows?
Generally speaking, yes. We try to keep the same people in the same areas so that way they're familiar with it. And in particularly difficult zones like, Councilman, our pedal's ward, we try to keep the best of the best in those areas to try to tackle those difficult areas.
We can move to a different topic if everyone's, the storm will, I'm just one more topic, if that's okay.
A little venture still on the cross?
Counselor President, if I may, one more thing on the snow. When we have the public works meeting, it's not going to be an adversarial thing. It's going to be key words, what we did good, what we did bad, I would conclude it. Because as Council President said, this is to try to get the best constituent service that we can. So it's not going to be a political thing, and I'm not going to tolerate a political thing. If Carlos, before, I'll give you a phone call so that maybe we could have these zones printed so everybody knows who's doing their zone. That way they have expedite if any other council members have anything else they would like ahead of time, you know, do it through calls or whatever. So this way here, it'd be a good working session so that moving forward for the next blizzard, you know, we're that much more prepared. Thank you, Council President.
Counselor Montague?
Thank you, Council President. I know this wasn't on the docket, Carlos, but we just want to bring this up. On February 15th, we met. Councilman Stikeos was at that meeting. At that meeting, I had an issue in my ward, and you told me to speak with Mr. Mason about it. The issue is from Nemo Abaco uprooted a tremendous amount of sod, dirt, and left it literally blocking a third of Whale Street and Princess Avenue. And on the 15th, I addressed that concern to Mr. Mason. It is now February 25th, and that dirt is still in the street, blocking traffic, causing a hazard to the public safety. So I hope you get a truck over there this week, and we can remove that sod and dirt from the street. I will certainly get on top of the issue, Councilman. And I apologize, I was not aware. And in the future, if the director, you know, has dealt with you on an issue and you don't see that again, please don't hesitate to give me a call, and we'll make sure we get on it.
Mr. Spatz? Councilman Stikeos?
My only time for my own communication, I don't know if someone's on the docket, is okay? Over you, Sean. I'll pay you free. I received, and it's on the docket, I received an email Friday from a constituent, something similar to Councilman San Maria's problem with early dumpster rule. It's on Harwood, Harwood Street. And right across from his president's house is a doctor's office. And he said it happened on multiple occasions. This is the first time he's contacted me on it, but I forget the doctor's name off the top of my head, but we'll be in process.
Councilman, if you could, just address an email to me, and we'll certainly follow up with the constituent and try to get more information. And if, you know, if it's a particular doctor's office, we can certainly try to address it with them through direct contact, via phone, email, or a personal visit, and find, you know, try to find out what the issue is. And certainly, it's something we can try to address here, Council.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions? Mr. Lopez, oh, sorry?
I don't know, there's Mr. Lopez, I just wanted to make a brief statement of the Council on Communications. First off, I'm listening gradually. Capri Bianco and Joe Roldan, their appointments, I think they'll do a fine job on their regards. And in response to a constituent who's no longer here, she left, Mrs. Sabrina, had said that information on the website, City of Cranston's website was incorrect. Actually, I checked all my information, it's correct. I've been receiving emails from constituents and phone calls, and I've responded to every email, every phone call I've received. So if any members of the general public feel that they need me, they don't have my contact information that is available on the city's website, this correct, and I'll respond to you as soon as you send me the lower phone call. I think the same goes for every member of this council that is here today. So, thank you.
Lopez, is there any on the docket?
I have none.
Introduction to new business, what are the three amendments in the right?
Proposed ordinance number 2-13-01 in amendment of Title 5 of the Code of City of Cranston entitled Business Licenses and Regulations Regarding Yard Sales, to be referred to the ordinance committee for hearing on March 14. Proposed ordinance 2-13-2 of amendment of Title 10, Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Cranston entitled Motor Vehicles in Traffic, or West Side Avenue, no parking generally, to be referred to Safety Services for hearing on March 4. Proposed ordinance 2-13-03, ratifying the Labor's International Union of North America Contract, Local Union 1322 for the fiscal year July 1, 2012, or June 30, 2015, to be referred to the Finance Committee for hearing on March 14. The following proposed ordinances all have to do with the same chapter, three of the Code of the City of Cranston entitled Revenue and Finance, so I'm not going to repeat the title. Proposed ordinance 2-13-04 is a tax incentive reform for commercial incentives for a five-year program. Proposed ordinance 2-13-05 is for a tax incentive reform for commercial properties for a 10-year program. Proposed ordinance 2-13-06 is for the tax incentive reform for industrial properties for the five-year program. Proposed ordinance 2-13-07 is a tax incentive reform for industrial properties for the 10-year program. All of these four ordinances are to be referred to the Finance Committee for hearing on March 14. The following resolutions are to be introduced. Resolution Support of Turning On the Lights at City Hall, this has to do when there are meeting nights, to be referred to the ordinance committee for hearing on March 14. Resolution Opposing Acts Related to Labor and Labor Relations Certifies School Teachers' Binding Amortration, to be referred to the ordinance committee for hearing on March 14. From Alleged Incident on February 14, 2014. A Subrogation Claim from GMAC on behalf of their insurer, Evelyn Bruce, for alleged incident on October 10, 2012. That's a property damage claim. Property damage claim of Michelle Arujado from alleged incident on January 5, 2013. Property damage claim of Antonio Tamar from alleged incident on February 11, 2013. Property damage claim of Barbara Dimersion from alleged incident on February 8, 2013. Property damage claim of James Pryor from alleged incident on February 9, 2013. A property damage claim of Daniel J. Hornberg from alleged incident on February 9, 2013. A personal injury claim from Peter Bertulli from alleged incident on January 22, 2013. A property damage claim from Jake, that's with a K, Jewelry from alleged incident on December 21, 2012. Property damage claim from John Mead from alleged incident on February 8, 2013. A property damage claim from Melanie De Sarno from alleged incident on January 22, 2013. A property damage claim from Jay Menapia from alleged incident on January 16, 2013. A property damage claim from Thomas Pastella from alleged incident on January 16, 2013. A property damage claim from David Farah from alleged incident on February 14, 2013. And a property damage claim from Louis Di Ambrosio from alleged incident on February 8, 2013.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman San Maria?
Some of the traffic ordinance are not in Safety Services anymore. Any traffic signage goes to ordinance. Do we have to make a correction? That was changing the rules also.
Which, through the chair, which, when are your amendments?
Yeah, 213-2, no parking on certain streets, that goes to ordinance. Any traffic signage, stop signs, et cetera, are not going to ordinance.
Through the chair, I was over this.
That was over on the, in the Rules Committee.
Please?
That was over on the Rules Committee that we had in the Senate.
I will, then I will make that correction. That's to be referred to the ordinance committee, proposed ordinance 2-13-02.
Any traffic-related signage, et cetera, goes to ordinance.
To be referred to the ordinance committee for hearing on March 14.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right, is there a motion to refer all matters as read by the City Clerk? So long, second. Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee? Yes. And Councilwoman Stikeos?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Mr. Lee has finished on the clerk's desk. I now call on the City Solicitor for an update.
March 13, the final aspect of our facilities plan. We might expect to hear more on that. At that point in time, our actions would be continued on that docket in the hopes that we'll get permission for our local ordinance product.
The City Clerk, continue this to the next docket. And I'll call on a legal counsel, Patrick Quinlan, for an explanation of current 25 statutes.
Yes, you can. Council President, since the second amendment is beginning to...
Right, Councilman San Maria?
The Rules Committee met December 19, 2012, to adopt rules for the 2013, 2015 session. The night of inauguration, I think I mentioned to the general, we voted to adopt the rules, and they were amended directly. So on the 28th, I made an amendment, Pat crafted an amendment, and we put a descriptive error to fix the error that we had voted on in committee. Maria feels that because it wasn't on the docket, we put it on the docket, that we should vote on again. I agree, Pat agrees. And we did leave off some more language from the committee meeting, the vote on the 19th, which was Councilman Maria's written idea. So I would like to indulge, and we can re-vote on the change as amended to the proposed amendment to conform with the committee's original intent, which is on, should have it on your media packet. So I'm going to put this portion, I'd like to do a re-vote, with it done, to the Council President.
All right, if you'd like to.
It should be the last page in your packet.
It's a memo to the City Council?
It's in a memo form, and the overall, as it had been intended to come under committee, is listed to file in the page.
Maria, can I, when they get to the page, I like to read the correct, if I click on the red page.
Counselor San Maria, Chris, I'll read the corrected version.
Okay. Let's see. Assuming a court of the committee is present voting on a matter, and the vote on the matter is majority of members voting in the negative, or results in a tie vote, then the matter will be reported out in the minutes of the committee, that the matter has been voted in the negative or a tie vote. And, and we're going to delete, no other action shall be taken on the matter unless five members of the entire council petition the chair to report the matter to the full council. I'm going to insert, the matter will be placed on the council docket for informational purposes only, and no vote will be taken. Basically, this means that if it's in the negative or a tie, it will die in committee, but it will still be reported on the docket for informational purposes only, no vote will be taken. This will satisfy the zoning issue problems we had with committee meetings that we didn't need to have. So this will satisfy all that, and it will be done finally, please. Did I explain it?
We need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I wish to accept it. You're second?
Second.
Discussion, discussion. Counselor, if you'd like to.
Thank you, Council President. I originally voted in favor of the change, but I think that, and I understand the reasoning, I think we would zero in on the zoning issue, but I think that was an unintended result. And I think that one of the things that I noticed is that because of the way our structure is, the committees are not made up of all members of the council. So you can have a situation, as we, I think, one of the first resolutions that went through with one of the committees, the people who are not members, the council people who are not members of that committee, are not necessarily, they're not going to vote on that issue in committee, certainly. And they're not going to get a voice possibly to voice any opposition or to engage in that if they're not able to make that committee, that particular committee. committee meeting. So of the nine members, you could have three members that are not on the committee who have had, you know, will not have any say in that particular matter. And if there were one or two dissenters, you could have potentially five members, the majority of the council may not agree with the decision, and they don't get to really represent the constituents and voice that opposition. The way it was before, you had at least a failsafe if you wanted to, if it was voted out with no recommendation, then at least the non-voting members of the committee got a chance to voice their opinion and cast a vote. In this situation, things can get through, resolutions, ordinances can go through, be tossed to the side, and three, three members may not even see it or may not, will certainly not get a right to vote, cast a vote. And I think with such a small body of this legislature, being only nine members, having a third of them not necessarily see each and every item that comes through, I think is probably not a good idea. I like the failsafe of at least having the five members being able to bring something back on the docket in case there's something really controversial.
Vice President Green.
The reason I proposed this in the Rules Committee was simply that I wanted full transparency for the general public, that if something died in committee, regardless of what it was, it died in committee. Any council person can resubmit any ordinance or any resolution at any time, whether it passes committee or fails committee. If you feel that you have an ordinance that was denied, that you wanted to resubmit, you could poll the council people who could not be at the meeting, who were your supporters, have them speak to the rest of the committee, and then push through the ordinance. The purpose of this was to, again, create full transparency for the general public. So if there are five people who wanted particular ordinance, they could not come to the ordinance committee meeting, you could resubmit the ordinance, they could come, make a testimony for the ordinance, then as a full council, whoever wants to put the ordinance in, you can re-vote on the ordinance at that time. About transparency, not the behind-the-scenes, let's get five people to try to take it to a full council without circumventing the process of the committee, like circumventing the committee process.
Councilman Sanrio.
Thank Council President. My only issue with Councilman Vivekio's comments are we usurp the committee process completely. Two-thirds of every committee is composed of council members. The only, Finance has seven. I attend most of the committee meetings that I'm not a member of, and the chair always allows me to voice my opinion at that time. If we don't have committee meetings, we usurp the process, that's part of democracy. We hear it, committee, committee's most important process, as far as I'm concerned. This will just usurp the whole committee. It just basically, you didn't like the vote the first time, but you wanted a shot at it. I mean, to me, you have one shot. If it doesn't make it out of committee, you don't have another shot. If it makes it out of committee, you have a second shot, and you can switch your vote, you can do whatever you want. But I just think we usurped the whole process.
Councilman Stilbo?
My question goes to Robert's rules. If you have a motion and it's tied, it dies, correct?
Correct.
If you have a motion and it's voted down, it's voted down. As I recall, the motion that was made that night was a motion to deny, which passed. So that was a motion that passed. Shouldn't that motion, then based on Robert's rules, get reported out of committee that it died?
I'm not, I don't recall if there's a particular issue you're discussing, but in theory, exactly.
So that's what happened then. If we're looking at a resolution of getting rid of the master ballot, as I recall, okay? As I recall, there was a motion, a motion could have been made to approve, and it wasn't. There was a motion made to deny, and the motion carried to deny. So under those circumstances, should that have been reported out of committee to the full council that was denied?
Yes. In terms, in terms of the process that you're talking about, I mean, Pat and I may have discussed this ten years ago. I remember what I was talking about, this was.
Are you that old?
Yeah, I am now. But in terms of a motion, a motion failing, a person on the prevailing side of the motion has to be the one to make the motion to reconsider that. So, and the majority has to be had. So once a vote is taken, it seems that it should be desposable unless.
Right, through the chair. According to on new rules now, if a motion is made, a vote is taken in committee, if it's a tie, it dies in committee. If it's voted down, it dies in committee. But if there's a motion for that particular piece of legislation, if the motion is made to deny, and the denial wins, then does it get reported out of committee? It should.
It does not get reported out of committee for action by the council, but the intent, I thought of the Rules Committee, was that there would be a report by the committee to the councils to what happened to that. That was the issue.
That's correct. That was the end.
Right. We just don't want to have what happened with the Wendy's, it was passed, people came to that meeting, it was denied in committee. Some of them left there thinking the Wendy's was not going to get built. Subsequently, it passed the council. So basically, the committee meeting wasn't needed, it was a waste of time, but it gave the impression to people of non-transparency, which is what Council President was talking about, that what happened here. So now that, Council Vice President, now that we have this, this process, it goes regularly, there's more transparency now than there was before. Thank you.
Councilman Bott?
Councilman, the, thank you, Council President. The example you just gave, there was a zoning issue, so that would still come before the full council or not.
Correct.
So.
Doesn't apply.
Doesn't apply. The issue voted in zoning.
It still does apply because the committee gave false information, and we shouldn't have had that vote.
One other question. So in the instance that Councilman Stilbo just noted, that was not reported out of committee, and even in the spirit of the rule, was not reported tonight. So will that get reported on the next docket? Or, all right, next.
Just so we're clear, the report out of the committee, one of the things we needed to repair in the rule, based on what committee did, the Rules Committee did, they said, there shall be a report back to the council on what action, if any, happened in the committee. So there's a difference between report out of the committee for action or report out of the committee for information. So it will always come up for information, but it won't always come up for action.
Well, if this rule change goes into effect, it would never come out for action.
It wouldn't come out, yeah, out of that committee on that thing. Someone could reintroduce it, try to get it out at a different time.
But for informational purposes, that should still be reported out at some point.
Exactly.
So would that be the next full council meeting?
At the next council meeting after the matter was considered, correct?
I'll defer to Councilman Stilbo.
Councilman Stilbo?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what Councilman Bott said. I, I think the situation with the Wendy's was a mess, but I think you straightened that out with the zoning changes going directly to the full council. So I don't think that has anything to do with this, what's, this amendment. This amendment does two things. One, which has been mentioned, is it eliminates what's essentially a discharge petition, which they have in the legislature, which they have in Congress, that a certain number of members can leapfrog the committee process and get a bill on the floor. And the second thing is that under the last council's rules, if there was a tie vote, then the chairperson could decide whether the bill was reported out or not. So this does, does two things. And I guess I'm, like Councilman Vivekio, when this was described to me, I didn't attend any of the Rules Committee meetings, I said, okay. But I think he's making a fairly persuasive argument that a majority of the council should be able to get something before the full council if, for whatever reason, the committee process doesn't work. Because I think.
The other vote doesn't go the way they want it to. Well, yes, let's pause.
Right, right. But we also, we also know that in, at the last council, we had a number of committee meetings where there were three of us present, and ordinances passed and failed based on two votes. So in that situation particularly, you know, could have gone against the will of the council, and five people could have voted it out. So maybe we need that safety valve.
Council Vice President Green.
Since I'm the one who championed this, let me explain to you my rationale, because everyone seems to be saying what I did it for and why I went forward. So I did this in regard to committee issues. So I sat down and started, in different ways, we as council people circumvent the committee process, and we found a loophole. The loophole said that five members of the council can re-petition outside of the committee process to take something to the full council, something that died in committee. I know what, what everyone's talking about, failsafes in the process, trying to put, you know, ways to put ordinances back forward that may have failed in committee, but that circumnavigates the committee process. The purpose of this was to have something that died in committee, be reported to the full council, that it died in committee. Therefore, full transparency, the general public would then know this item died in committee. If at any time anyone wants to resubmit an ordinance, full disclosure, full transparency goes back through, through the committee process. There is no loophole, there is no magic, let me go back and redo this. There is no behind-the-scenes jockeying, it is upfront, transparent, everyone can see what's happening on this council.
Councilman Vivek.
Thank you, Council President. Council Vice President Farina, I, I understand your reasoning, and I certainly am not questioning your voters. And I know it was addressing the Wendy's issue, and you're right. We made mistakes on the first, the first time Wendy's issue came before the council, but.
It's not just the Wendy's, it's, it's gaps in the ordinance process. It just happened to be seen on the Wendy's, but the hole existed for any ordinance.
Although the second petition was a different location, so it wasn't exactly the same, it wasn't the same Wendy's, Wendy's application, it was at a different location. The other thing, though, I want to point out is that I don't, I don't have, and Mr. Bott doesn't have any say in the committee assignments, so I'm not a member of certain committees, so I don't, my constituents don't get a vote on many of it, couldn't, couldn't be denied a vote on many issues because I'm not allowed to vote on certain committees. So I may never see certain ordinances or resolutions. I think what we did with the zoning, by having it before the full council, makes a lot of sense because now everyone's voting, and you're going to get, you know, potentially a five, four, or you're going to get nine votes most, most nights. The committee, maybe committees are an obsolete form of government at this level because we don't, we all need to participate anyway. So to me, all it does is silence the minority of the group, and it may not be partisan, it may be, you know, there may be like-minded individuals that agree on certain things, there may be three or four members, five members maybe, but they're never going to get that to a vote because it may get voted out two to one out of the committee, as Councilman Stilbo said. So I, I'm against this, I just don't think it works. I understand what you're trying to do, and I think you're right, transparency is important. But I think if, if the public and the voters don't see everything that we do, if it's just disclosed at the council meeting, but there's no, no debate over it, then they really, all they know is that it was defeated in the committee, and that's it.
Councilman Farina?
Yeah, I'm not going to speak on this again, I'm going to let, let the council vote and let the vote decide where it goes. But to echo something you said, you said your constituents don't have a voice. Unfortunately, your local constituents do have a voice. Constituents have three other voices besides yours, they have three elected citywide candidates, myself, John Layden, Saturday. So that's just my statement. And again, this is for transparency, for full transparency, so the public knows if something dies in committee, it's, and it will have to be resubmitted and go through the committee process again. And my, Councilman Vivekio, if you think the committee process is arbitrary, then maybe we should look to change the whole structure of the council. But since we currently do have committees, I think we have to make it transparent with the organizational structure we have.
Councilman Sanrio?
Thank you, Council President. And I may well agree with Councilman Stilbo on one thing, this rule change does not make it mandatory that you can attend committee meetings that you should attend. So I think that's a very important excuse. Get your butt here when you need to be here because you're elected by the people, and don't say that, well, because it passed two to one, it's not a reflection of the people, you were supposed to be here at the committee meeting. Every committee has two-thirds of the city council sitting on the committee. The other three people can come to the committee meetings and they can speak on it. They're not muzzled by any stretch of the imagination. Get rid of the committee process if you want, then we'll just have a council meeting every month. I think it's a bad idea. Thank you.
Councilman, I can't.
Thank you, Council President. And I understand the intent of this, and I just have a couple of general comments. First of all, I think the, the issue is a resolution, and if I'm not mistaken, resolutions can come to the floor without going to the committee process, from my understanding that we did in the past. So I don't know why that ended up in the committee process anyway, because a resolution can come right to the floor if the sponsor requests that, I believe, with no objection from the, from the council. My second comment is, I, I think everybody's referring to the Wendy's, but I can remember another instance that transpired in Ward Five in Councilman Sanrio's district, where it was some type of area that wanted to build a, a project there, I forgot the name of it, but certain individuals promoted their case and general members of the public came out, and they came out with numbers, and Richard and I voted against it, and I think it was a tie, or was it a tie, Richard? And which would have made it die, but there's certain political leads and power brokers who kept being persistent and wanted to have another bite of the apple, and they kept returning and returning, if I'm not mistaken. And that's why, that's why I fear that certain individuals in this city who are very, very powerful, who don't get their way the first time, can circumvent the committee process. If there's a resolution or ordinance that dies in committee, the sponsor of that committee has the option, just reintroduce it, and try to lobby for it to pass the next time. Talk to your colleagues, you know, that's what the whole idea of compromise in, in politics is all about, Councilman. So reintroduce it, lobby for it, and possibly set it to not have passed committee.
Councilman Bott?
I'd just like to make a point more that this discussion was initiated by Councilman Vivekio and has nothing to do with my resolution that I introduced that died in committee. I know it seemed to be pointed in my way, but, and in the end, I do think that the overall process, I do favor what Councilman Vivekio is saying. And also, it seems like that was another zoning ordinance that the Council, I can't just hold up, that would be unaffected by this rule anyways, so, thank you.
My only comment is, I put six members on every single committee, one more than the previous president did. The reason why I did it was to make sure the vote is out for him. I believe the committee process, and two-thirds of the members of this council are on the committee, nobody can say they weren't represented, because as the Vice President of the Council said, there are three citywide candidates, and at least two of them are on every committee. Now, you take a vote on this?
I was going to move the question, but if you want to take it.
Just move it.
I'm making a motion to move the question. Second.
Question member, second. Any further discussion? Take the poll.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stilbo?
No.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Councilwoman Hella?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pree?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Now on the actual change rate, the actual change, motion to approve.
Exactly. Motion made, second. Any further discussion? There are none, please take a vote. Hearing none, please take a roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Pastor Stikos?
No.
Pastor Bott?
No.
Pastor Harrell?
Yes.
Pastor Seale?
Yes.
Pastor Maria?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the members passes. Before we adjourn, I'd like to, uh, announce that the second public hearing on the Phoenix Live Zone Change will be held on Thursday, March 28, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. The hearing will be re-adapted to a punished note of life. Our next city council meeting will be held on Monday, March 25. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, a conference before we adjourn, Councilman Stikos?
Uh, on that meeting on the 28th, will we be voting or?
No, it's not the information on the previous one.
Thank you.
I wanna make sure that everyone gets heard. Motion to adjourn? Motion made, your second.
Second.